Good evening and welcome to the Ashkash Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2013. Has this meeting been brought by a notice?
Yes it has.
Please call the roll.
Vito?
Here.
Eliason?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Lumberger?
Here.
Saginaw?
Here.
Wiedenhaupt?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next we have our Pledge of Allegiance, and this week we have two students from Franklin Elementary, Lea Hollis, grade 2, and Carson Hollis, grade 5. If you could please stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (audience clapping) (audience clapping) Thank you.
Your two is right, I'd like to present you with certificates. An appreciation, Sean Ford, Carson, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Oh, and it should be noted that you're not required to stay for the rest of the day. We do realize that school, it is another school day tomorrow. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, the next thing on the agenda is the public hearing on the proposed budget for 2013-2014. Call to order. Yeah, okay, yeah, I was gonna, do we need to call it again? Okay, reading a published budget notice. Is the notice different than the resolution?
Typically what they do is they just read the top of the, what was noticed in the paper, it's, it's in your budget book, page 28.
Page 21?
28. That's what they've done on the top. There's verbiage on the top, that's all that's ever been read.
First three lines. Notice is hereby given to the qualified electors of the Ashkash Area School District that the budget hearing will be held in the boardroom at 215 South Eagle Street on September 11th, 2013, at 6:00 PM. The summary of the budget is printed below. Detailed copies of the budget are available beginning September 2nd, for inspection in the district office at 215 South Eagle Street. All right, and with us here tonight to present the budget, Sue Schnor.
Do we have to read the addendum?
I certainly can't. Where's the addendum?
Uh, page 29.
Addendum Revenue Limit Exemption for Energy Conservation, through Article 121.914D, or excuse me, 401. The school district of Ashkash exercised its taxing authority to exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis for $945,168 on energy efficiency measures and renewable energy product, uh, and renewable energy products for the 2012-13 school year. Presentation of the budget. Sue.
Um, the first, um, first page is up until about page 13 is a profile of all the schools. Um, I basically just kind of copied what Bob Test did ahead of time, but just a reminder, I did update the enrollments, but they're 2012 enrollments, because we don't have Third Friday yet this year. It's 2012-13 free reduced data, and I started working with Randy to update like the heating plant information on here, because as you know with our energy exemption referent or resolution that you had, we did like $14 million worth of projects. So in some cases, under needed maintenance, like let's take Brooklyn on page 5, I crossed off that that building needs boilers, but then I realized I didn't change, update the heating plant to what the new boilers are. So we'll work on updating those pages, but it's a good representation of, of our schools, I think. Then starting on, on page 16, talks about the district's membership versus enrollment. Membership really is residency. Residency, it's, it's used for state aid purposes, it's used for revenue limit purposes. It's the students who live in the Ashkash School District regardless of what public school they go to, so that includes open enrollment students that go to other districts. It's students who reside in Ashkash whether they actually go to Ashkash or not. It's an, it's not a number that's very helpful for, for you as a board, but it's used for aid purposes, it's used for revenue limit purposes, and it's an FTE number, so that's why it's almost always smaller than the enrollment number, because it's a full-time equivalency number. Then the bottom of the chart, I showed actual enrollment, this is the number of students in our schools, whether they actually live in Ashkash or they open enroll here. Both numbers have been declining, um, over the course of the years, as you can see on that chart, um, but projections are, is that we are actually, our enrollment may actually be up this fall, and we'll talk a little bit about the impact of that, um, later. Then I have some comparative data, um, some of it you've seen before, but then on page 20, I've added another chart, um, kind of like similar to what Steve you had asked about looking at mil rate comparables to other districts. And I realized the chart looks really busy, but it includes a lot of helpful information. Um, the first line across the top compares us to like-sized school districts that you typically compare yourself to. Um, the middle row compares ourselves to the athletic conference, and then the bottom row compares us to our neighbors. So it compares us to the seven districts that actually touch our boundaries. And as you can see, we are consistently low or lowest when it comes to compare, comparisons on mil rate. Equalized value is not something you have any control of, that is the property value in the entire district divided by membership, but I included it because I think it's important to see, um, where you fall with your comparables there, you're about the average. And then cost per member, I think is also really important, that you fall low or lowest, not necessarily lowest, but you fall low in your comparables with cost per average. So it shows how the conservativeness of the district over the years. This page is in the budget book, on page 23, and it just is a good illustration of kind of how your state aid has been decreasing as compared to your whole revenue limit. When you look at this equalization aid is the biggest, other than, um, it's your biggest revenue source the district has, and if you compare that to what the total revenue limit is, you were as high as 68 percent, and the projection for 13-14 is down to 55 percent. And I tried to figure out, well, well, what is the reason for this? Why is state aid becoming a lower and lower percentage of your revenue limit? And my first thought is, well, maybe your property values are increasing in Ashkash. Um, and I went out on the DPI webpage, and, and that's actually not the case. As you can see from, from this chart, um, this charts the property value per student in Ashkash compared to the state average, and the state average is the green squares and Ashkash is the blue triangles. Um, so how equalized aid works is if you're a high property value district, your property value per student is high, you get very little state aid. If your property value is low, which means you don't have much of a tax base, you get more state aid. And it's compared to the state average, so if you have greater property value than the state average, you get less state aid than the average, and then vice versa. So one would think that if our state aid was going down, that our property values would be going up compared to the state average, and that is not the case. Our average is actually going down compared to the state average. So the reason that our state aid is going down as a whole is the state just isn't funding education. Um, they're not putting as much money in the equalization aid pot as fast as districts' expenditures are growing through the revenue limit. Then to just briefly recap the budget process that you've gone through, um, for people who might not have seen the other workshops or been part of the other presentations, this began back in February, and when we began back in February, the governor's budget had a zero increase per student on the revenue limit. And so that's why the district had to cut $3.4 million at that time, and that's why you had the, the budget committees come together and you developed the list of budget reconciliation items, which is on page 25 of the budget book. Then the state fine budget was finalized, and we ended up being able to increase by $150 per student. Seventy-five of that is a categorical aid increase, and 75 of that is the revenue limit increase. So then our projected deficit was, was 2.1 million, which is about $1.3 million difference than when you first started the process. Um, the other effect of the state budget is they froze Fund 80 levies, which we had already talked a little bit about. But I just want to remind you that these are still estimates, um, and it's based upon a decrease in students, it's 66 students was the number, and this budget's also based on the school board utilizing their full levy authority. Those are the two big assumptions that went into building this budget, um, but a reminder that these are still estimates, when, when you, we're gonna bring a budget to you to pass two weeks at the next board meeting, that'll still be a preliminary budget, it won't be the final budget. And between then and the final, in the end of October, we'll still be refining some of those numbers, especially the salary and fringe numbers, as you know, we're still hiring people, um, so we're still finalizing all of those numbers.
And by that time, we'll also have the actual enrollment.
Correct. The third Friday is next Friday, so we'll have those numbers, um, and then we're still waiting on property values, we're still waiting on the final equalization aid number. And then just a reminder, of those budget reconciliation items, these items were added back, so we, we added back the middle school office tax. We originally budgeted for a 1.75 percent increase for all employee groups except for administration, we, that was raised to 2 percent, and then we added elementary GT staff, so about 451,000 of those items on page 25 and 26 have been added, added back. The tax levy page, I think that's page 30, um, is sort of a one-page summary of all the funds together, and it shows you the potential tax levy increase that's in this budget. Um, but as we progress further and get better information, um, we're now done with the audit, we pretty much closed the 12-13 fiscal year, and due to being under budget, I believe we're beginning to get less equalization aid than projected on this page. Um, I projected that we would be, in the beginning of July, projected, projected that we have about $2.8 million under budget, and we're actually coming in about $4.9 million under budget. Um, 1 million of that, approximately 1 million of that is due to an audit adjustment, we made some purchases in June that the auditors decided that we couldn't expense in June because the students wouldn't be using those items, and so they took that out of our expenditures, so those will be expenditures in 13-14. Um, and the other million was partly was in salaries and fringes and purchase services, and I really need to take the time to look at where, where those areas are, so I just, I really need to look at that closer. Um, but because our state aid is based on what we spend, and we don't spend the whole budget, that means our, our aid projection is gonna go down for next year. Are also, it looks like our membership or our student count is gonna be increasing. Um, and the revenue limit is based on student count, so if we were projecting a decrease of 66 students, but now we're increasing maybe 100 students, that's 160 shift in students. Um, so between those two scenarios, um, it could potentially mean a tax levy of 45 million rather than the 43 million that's projected on page 30. Um, I think that's the worst-case scenario, because if we're under budget, usually most districts come in under budget, so it might spread that out over, over all districts, but until the final numbers are in, DPI won't even give us another estimate until the middle of October. Um, so we could be looking at a $3.6 million tax levy increase instead of a 1.7, which is about 8 percent, um, instead of 4 percent. And that would mean a mil rate of $9.61, which is a 77 cent increase rather than, um, a 36 cent increase, which is also about 8 percent. Um, the good news, there's always good news, um, is this, this shows a, a tax rate history compared to the state, so the, the blue is the, is the Ashkash School District, and the red is the state average, and as you can see, we've been historically below the state average. And if you remember on that comparables page, we're, we're the lowest in all of our comparables in the area, so I think even with a, a potential 8 percent tax levy increase, other districts are gonna be in the same situation we are. The state only put 1 percent increase in equalization aid in the whole pot, so other districts are also gonna be experiencing, um, tax levy increases to this magnitude or in that, that range. And we'll know more, you know, as we start watching the newspaper and other districts are having their budget hearings, they'll be putting their information out there, but I wouldn't be surprised to see other districts in the same tax levy rate increase that we Then to go on in the budget book chart, on page 31 and 32, talks about where the money comes from and where the money goes. Um, and actually, these stayed pretty stable, I tried to compare last year to this year, and the only real difference is salary and benefits were about 77 percent of your budget before, and now they're about 79 percent, so that's not a dramatic change. And property taxes went from 37 percent on the revenue side to about 36 percent, but, um, that was based on the, the prior projection, so they might be both very close to 37 percent by the time it's done. And starting on page 33 to the end of the budget book, um, provides the detail of the budget by, by object area, by salary, by fringes. It compares the 12-13 budget, oh, I made a typo on the top of that page, I just saw it, says 13-13 budget to 13-14 budget, the 12-13 budget to the 13-14 budget, and then it compares the increase and decrease between the two. And then I also included unaudited actuals for 12 and 13. There shouldn't be too many more adjustments to 12 and 13, the auditors are here, they're done, they made the majority of their adjustments, um, there shouldn't be too many more changes to that. Um, and as you can see, salaries were under budget by almost a million dollars, um, purchase services were under budget by about a million dollars. Non-capital, is your supplies and materials, they were also under budget by about a million dollars, but that is, most of that's carryover, as you know, we let our buildings carry over money, and most of that carryover falls in the supplies and materials area, so that's accounted, accounted for in the, in the supplies and materials. And then the capital projects, capital area is also under by about a million dollars, and that's the audit transaction, that's basically the auditors finding a little less than 1 million dollars in, in purchases that they want moved to 13-14. And for the new budget, the 13-14, um, so my assumptions we made is 2 percent salary increase, with the exception of administration, as you know, um, but if you look at the detail, it only shows a .3 percent increase in salaries, and that's because of the turnover of 115 people approximately, um, a lot of those people come in, the new people come in with lower salaries than those people who resigned or retired, so that savings, that's why it doesn't reflect a 2 percent increase. Um, in benefits is the same thing, we anticipated a 10 percent health and dental renewal in January, um, those bids came in at 13 percent, so the insurance committee is looking at possible plan design changes that we may or may not implement to bring that rate down to 10 percent. But again, the budget doesn't reflect a 10 percent increase because of all those replacement people. Um, all of the budgets, departments, schools, are, their budgets were either frozen or reduced, um, then I just pointed out that we had approximately 115 position, positions hired, that might, number might be a little off, but that's the approximate number, um, and that's retirements, replacements. I think that there's approximately four new hires, um, not counting special ed, where there's still some additional hires in special ed, so that's not included in those four. And then the very last page of the budget book, um, is the Fund 80 summary. Fund 80 is the community service fund, it's where we, um, record our recreational, recreation department budget is in there. Um, this used to be controlled by the revenue limit, so when you calculated your revenue limit, it was Fund 10, it was Fund 38, non-referendum dent, and it was Fund 80. And for whatever reason, the legislature pulled Fund 80 out of the revenue limits and basically said districts could, could tax whatever they wanted to in Fund 80, and they should have known that creative business managers would take advantage of that and, and move programs there. Now, I, I don't believe Ashkash did that, because if you look at this list, all those things are very, um, there's a justifiable reason for all of those things to be in Fund 80. Um, but because other districts used it to move some costs there, the legislature's really cracking down on Fund 80 and are requiring school districts to report to DPI all the programs that they have in Fund 80, you have to post it on your webpage, so page 43 is a sample of what we posted on our webpage, exactly, that's the exact thing we posted on our webpage. And then it also requires that you bring it up at your annual meeting or your budget hearing, so I am complying with the law by bringing it up.
And as we would state that this is, we are as pure as the driven snow on this issue, and it's thanks to Elle and all, Sue and all predecessors, um, we were not among those that caused this to occur at the legislature.
Right, there's nothing on this list that I would, that I couldn't justify being in Fund 80.
Right.
So that is the extent of my presentation.
Thank you. All right, um, well, we are gonna proceed to public comments, but, uh, can we get board comments at this time as well? Board comments? Anyone have any questions? Pursue them. Okay, regarding guidelines for public comment, um, if there's anyone out there who wishes to, uh, come and comment on the, uh, proposed budget, um, they need to list their name and address, and limit their comments to 15 minutes. Public comments rather than questions and answers and a dialogue are, uh, what are expected, uh, at this time, um, and please use specific names of district personnel, or excuse me, the use of specific names of district personnel, um, uh, may lead to legal liability. Is there anyone who wishes to comment publicly on this year's budget? This 13-14 budget? No, seeing none? And no further comments by anyone here at the district? We all have this in advance, uh, actually, I guess, uh, uh, well, actually, that's a comment that I already asked as well, so, um, seeing none, I guess we will adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, second?
No, you can.
Call the roll.
Uh, Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Motion carried.
All right, uh, compliance with open meeting law notification, uh, at this point, we will, uh, once again, um, go back to our original, um, board meeting, or I should say the regularly scheduled board meeting. Um, has this meeting been properly noted?
Yes it has.
Uh, please call the roll.
Vito?
Here.
Eliason?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Lumberger?
Here.
Saginaw?
Here.
Wiedenhaupt?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, uh, board administrative reports, board president's report. Uh, I don't have anything particular to report this evening, um, other than, uh, I did hear from a lot of people about buzzing, and it's something that we are definitely, uh, looking into, and we will be making modifications. Mr. Mack has been meeting with the buzz company on a regular basis, and, and it is not something that, uh, is being glossed over, we are definitely looking into this issue and trying to resolve it as soon as we can. Uh, sorry, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this evening, we have a very brief, um, superintendent's report at this stage of the year with, um, just really having, uh, seven days of school, and, um, we don't have lots of, um, new news. Um, one of the events of the summer, uh, was the fact that we had a wonderful note, and I won't go into the, reading the detail, but, um, the, um, Ashkash West football team and coaches participated again with the Sheldon Nature Area Committee, uh, with a number of activities regarding the maintenance and care for the Sheldon Nature Center, and they sent, uh, the most gracious thank you back, and were most appreciative of, of that effort. Last Friday night, uh, we had, um, the, um, new inductees into the wall of fame for, uh, Ashkash High School and Ashkash West High School, remembering that, um, the, um, original high school, um, uh, program, uh, has, uh, persons before, we had both West and North, um, their honorees, and we honored a number of individuals, some of whom were athletes, but some of whom have been such dedicated, um, volunteers in the community that, um, honored and supported the athletic programs at, uh, Ashkash West and Ashkash North over the years, and it was a fabulous ceremony, and, um, and the individuals had a chance to, um, be recognized and honored and receiving, um, uh, one copy of the, of the, uh, of the award, and having the other one posted on the walls at, um, Ashkash West High School. Very nice event. Um, on, on, uh, last, um, Thursday night, uh, South Park murals were unveiled, and, um, I might call upon, um, Director Herzog, who was instrumental in, um, uh, the providing funding through one of her, um, volunteer projects, um, to describe, um, the event that occurred at, uh, South Park, um, last Thursday night.
Thank you. Um, I've, I've been part of an organization called SOAR, which stands for Special Opportunities for Artist Residencies, it's been around since, I believe, about 1990, established by, uh, former Superintendent James Henderson, and Gladys Vaidamanos, a long-time English teacher in the district, and various committee members. Their, their role is to gather funds every year so that all students in all schools have the opportunity to engage in active hands-on learning in the arts, and arts can be broadly interpreted in terms of not only visual arts, performing arts, musical arts, scientific arts as well, Dr. Lumberger. And, uh, anyway, the, the process is very simple, the, the school personnel apply to the SOAR board, uh, up to four times a year for funding, and SOAR, if they have the money, will fund up to 50 percent of a project, in some cases, they've gone above that. And since 1990, uh, over $200,000 has gone into the schools as a result of the SOAR dollars, plus you add on the, the dollars provided by the schools. So this particular mural was funded last year by the SOAR board as a result of Erica Welbuss, uh, I believe her name is, the, uh, the art teacher at South Park, and it's just a phenomenal mesmerizing, um, piece of artwork. There were many parents and children who just stood and stared at the various panels of this and went up and touched it because the texture is very interesting. It almost looks like a quilt in some ways, but it's just phenomenal. The same artist who worked with the students and the art teacher at South Park was also responsible for the whirlwind sculpture which stands outside of, um, Jacob Shapiro School as well, so, um, South Park is thrilled with this, they're already talking about additional projects to either add on to this or decorate other hallways, but all students at South Park, all art students played a part in, in getting this mural up and going.
Sure, thank you. Nice.
Uh, Ashkash, um, the, the, Ashkash West, uh, this weekend was announced that they were students and tenants that Friday, um, what West football game were recognized as the Fox 11 Fans of the Week, it was, uh, it was a great crowd, unfortunately not a win for Ashkash and that, uh, Ashkash West that evening, but it was touch and go until probably the last seven minutes where it could have easily have still been a win. So with that, um, uh, we, we honor the fans and participations in that. The balance is simply a listing of, um, calendar events that the superintendent has participated in, um, in the past week, um, and it's gonna make it, and, and those, uh, those are pieces that, um, have been part of the activities in the last two weeks. With that completes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there other reports? Anyone? No? All right, no reports by other board members? Uh, we will move on to the first workshop, Connected Community Teen Screen, uh, which is part of Goal 5A of the, uh, Strategic Plan. Sarah Bassing, something?
Mm-hmm. About a, about 10 months ago, I began hearing about this at a recent, at a Fox Valley Superintendent's meeting, and discovered that a number of our sister districts had been engaged in this, um, this, um, voluntary survey option that, um, our students at either, neither
Ninth grade and hope to kind of go right in the middle of those two ages. TeenScreen uses both active parent consent and student consent. So, we do a mailing to the ninth grade class. We need consents back in order to be able to offer the screening to the students. We can't screen any student without permission. And then when a student comes down to the screening room, we tell them what the screen is about, what the process is, and then we ask for their permission to participate in the screen as well. So, some students choose not to. And then we send a letter home to their parents. And we can always screen that student at another time. But having students consent to the process lends to the level of honesty for students. So, it really is nice to know that when students are participating, they're participating because they want to. They don't feel like they have to lie about this or answer in a certain way. They can just not participate. So, it's truly voluntary, free, and completely confidential. So, everything we do is completely separate from the schools. And we do inform parents that our files are completely separate from any academic records. We do encourage families to sign releases of information so that we can communicate and connect the student to the appropriate school staff. And we do that with every student. Some families choose to, some families choose not to. It's a 10-minute computerized questionnaire called a DPS. And I won't go through all of this, but it covers the major diagnoses that are commonly associated with increased risk for suicide. So, it also asks very specifically about suicidal ideation and attempts, as well as general health problems. How's your vision? How's your hearing? How's your dental? And the other really neat thing about this tool is it talks about the impairment level and the impact of the symptoms on the student's lives. So, after the student participates in the 10-minute computerized questionnaire, we get the results immediately. We know how that student screened and can take appropriate action. The DPS yields a positive screen rate of about 30%.
Actually, I wanted to ask you about that.
Yeah.
When you said you were going to...
That's the most interesting one.
Well, I guess I was... What exactly does that mean? The DPS will yield a screen positive, meaning that this computer...
The tool itself?
...will yield a positive rate, meaning that it sees, generally speaking, 30% of all kids are depressed?
Generally...
Or in danger of suicide?
No, it screens positive. So, it assesses for all of those different things that you see in that second bullet point. And if it meets a certain threshold in a certain area, then it screens positive. And so, it screens positive about 30% of the time.
Right.
So, 30% of the students who participate screen positive.
Okay. And I guess that's what I was getting at.
Okay.
So, we were talking about how Winnebago County has a higher rate than the state of Wisconsin, state of Wisconsin in general.
Mm-hmm.
You had numbers up there that were about 15%. This thing is yielding information that says that 30% of those that take this exam are in danger of suicide where...
Not necessarily of suicide.
But depression?
It could be any of those things. It may be a mild form of anxiety. It may be a mild form of depression. But it's really intervening early in the signs and symptoms of mental health before it gets to the point of being chronic. So, this tool really is an intervention to help identify the early signs and symptoms so it doesn't turn into something more serious.
Because when I read that, I thought, well, wait a minute. If we have a statewide average of about 15%, why is this thing so high?
Gotcha.
Why is this computer test?
You're looking at a lot of different disorders. You're looking at OCD, social phobia, alcohol, marijuana, and other substance abuse, panic disorder, anxiety. The YRBS questions deal with feeling sad or hopeless, and then they deal specifically with suicide.
So, the YRBS does not address these particular signs or symptoms?
Right. So, because we're addressing a broader range, we're also getting a higher positive.
And because it's sensitive, it's trying to just pick up on the early signs and symptoms so it's not at that critical point.
Okay, I see.
And these things are risk factors in the long run for suicide.
Matt, it would be similar to in our three- and four-year-old screening through child development, we probably have somewhere around 20 to 24% who we say are positive for speech impairment or significant cognitive delay or various things like that. And when we do further evaluation, we probably come up with maybe 5% or 6% or something like that. So, it's the same idea that we would use on that special ed side.
And that's a good point because this is a two-step process. So, just because the DPS may have a yield positive of 30%, we have a two... It's a two-step process. So, they do this, and then they meet with a clinician. So, the clinician then determines whether or not what the screen shows is actually clinically significant. So, it may just be a blip on the radar, and that's why we have that face-to-face conversation with every student following this computerized piece, to determine whether or not it's just a growing pain or, yeah, this really could be something worth looking further into.
Thank you.
Yep. So, like I was mentioning, after the students participate in the computerized questionnaire, we meet with every student and either go through a debriefing interview or a clinical interview. So, for students who screen negative, we meet with them and do a quick five-minute, "How was it for you? What are your coping skills? What are your hobbies? Would you like to speak with a clinician?" And just to make sure that they're okay. We... For every student that we screen, we also give out two bookmarks. One is a coping skills bookmark. The other one is how to help a friend bookmark. And then the third piece of information we give every student we screen is a resource card for their high school, identifying what the resources are for that student right there within their school. So, guidance counselor, school nurse, psych, if there's any counseling services or other special services within the school. So, really working to get the kiddos connected back to their school. The clinical interview is about a 20-minute to 30-minute process. So, we have a clinician with us, like I mentioned, who will look further into what came up on the screen to determine whether or not it's clinically significant. I would say the average of the 30 that screen positive, the 30% that screen positive through the DPS, about 20 to 15% of those actually are referred for services. So, that's an average. The entire process itself takes about 20 to 60 minutes, depending on if a student's screen's negative or positive. So, we can send them right back to class. We can hold on to them however the school wants to work it out. We've been in schools that do it both ways. And then the clinical interview takes a little bit longer. TeenScreen staff contact parents if there's a concern. So, we call parents that day to say, you know, "You signed this consent for your student to participate. Here's what the screen showed, and here's what our recommendation is." We find out from families, what's their ability to pay? Do they have insurance? Do they need a sliding fee? Do they need free services? And then we send them resources within the community. So, three different resources to choose from that match their ability to pay. So, we... As we're doing that networking and those memorandums of understanding, we're also finding out, "What insurances do you accept?" So that we can make accurate referrals for families and hopefully get a good connection on the first appointment. And then we do case management. So, we follow families through at least three completed appointments or up to 90 days, whichever comes first. So, it's not just identifying, giving them an appointment, but it's also making sure that they get to that appointment and helping the families along the way. Are you having any barriers? Do you need help getting there? Do you need help with your insurance? You know, "Was it a good fit? Do we need to find somebody else?" So, we really stay connected with the families for as long as they would like, quite honestly. And we've had some families that ask us to follow them through the summer, so we do. I think I covered all of that. Case management discusses the results of the clinical interview. Parents are contacted, recommendation for further evaluation, and then through at least one, ideally up to three visits with that outside referral. TeenScreen, like I mentioned before, really is a schools and communities program. So, it's a partnership with the community and with the schools. And they're one in the same, but, you know, it takes a village. And so, Teresa's going to talk a little bit about the support within the community for our screening.
Okay. You see the acronym there, WCCDRT. What that means is Winnebago County Child Death Review Team. And these are the members of the Child Death Review Team, and I'm the facilitator for the Winnebago County Child Death Review Team. And our mission is to examine why and how our children are dying in Winnebago County and then to make recommendations for prevention, to prevent our children from dying. And this is close at heart to me because I am a mom who has lost a son at the age of three to an injury. And so, I understand what it's like to lose a child. And so, I'm very passionate about this. So, we have... The group there meets monthly, and we have reviewed the deaths of our children and the 10 suicides that occurred in the last three and a half years. And we made a formal recommendation. And I would like to share the recommendation with you. So, I do have copies here. I guess what I'd also like to just say from a personal standpoint is I'm also a mom of a 10th grader, a 10th grade girl, and straight A student, has a lot of friends, appears happy. One night, in the middle of the night, came to me and said, "Mom, I just... This is just hard. It's too hard for me." And she had a hard time telling me about it because she didn't feel she had the right to feel the sadness that she felt because she thought she had everything that she should have and need and had a good life, and why was she feeling so sad? And so, you know, it isn't necessarily the... Like, you know, Sarah had mentioned, it's not necessarily the students, you know, low income or students that are doing poorly in school or not doing well socially. It, you know, it can be any student. And I'm glad that she was able to tell me, and we were able to get her the help she needed. Another story that I just wanted to share was that when she was a freshman, one of her friends had suicidal thoughts and didn't have anyone to talk to and shared it with my daughter. And my daughter did know that she needed to go to a trusted adult, and so she did, rather than speaking directly, she did write a letter to the school counselor to let her know about the child, and then the child was able to get the help. I would like to see that the children aren't the ones that have to figure out what's going on with, you know, their own peers, that were able to find this out before. So, those are just a couple of things that I wanted to share with you on a personal From the recommendation that you have in front of you here, you'll see the supporting organizations who are on the review team and who have approved of the recommendations in this form here. And they're the ones listed up on the screen there. But what I have on the next page here is we define the problem, which we've already talked about, the number of deaths, and we also reviewed the YRBS data. We also have access to the number of hospitalizations and emergency rooms. And so, that information is there on page one of the recommendation. The third paragraph down there, you can see 324 youth hospitalized for intentional self-inflicted injury in Winnebago County from 2006 to 2011. That's the latest data that's available. And then 150 visits to the ER for intentional self-inflicted injury. These do not include youth who expressed intent to harm self but did not carry out the self-harm. Through a review of the individual deaths, we were able to identify risk factors for suicide in our youth. They are not... There's not a particular order, but these were the most prevalent risk factors. And as Sarah noted, depression and other mental illnesses is a major risk factor. Relationship problems we see as a risk factor, both with family and friends. Access to firearms is another issue. And just impulsivity of young people can be an issue. Feelings of failure in school, even if they're not seen necessarily as, like in the case of my daughter, getting As but feeling like she's not doing well enough still. And also, contact with law enforcement are risk factors. Protective factors are having strong connections with family, learning skills for problem-solving, effective access to clinical interventions. So, that's where the TeenScreen comes in. And then effective prevention strategies are listed there. Educating parents, community gatekeeper training for question persuade and refer. Screening programs such as TeenScreen. And this is evidence-based. So, these effective prevention strategies are evidence-based. And it goes on to list some of the other strategies that are effective. So, our formal recommendations then from Winnebago County Child Death Review Team are as listed there. And to support and sustain community education initiatives for the purpose of preventing youth suicide, our suggestions are to get the youth risk behavior data out to the community, doing QPR trainings to the community and to parents. Number two, which is a strong point that is a recommendation, is providing means for earlier identification of youth at risk of self-harm or suicide. Suggestion, depression screening, TeenScreen. So, that is a formal recommendation, is the TeenScreen. And then, training of primary care practitioners in dealing with identification of youth at risk. Decreasing youth access to lethal means, gun safety, which you should... Hopefully, we'll be hearing more about. We're working on gun locks, and we did hand those out at the Oshkosh Back to School Fair. I'm not sure what that was exactly called. Back to School Fair. Number five is promoting community initiatives to support teens at risk for suicide, encouraging people to explore best practices in dealing with suicide ideation. And then, number six, promote protective factors. So, it's not only important to, you know, TeenScreen is our main focus, but another thing to look at is protective factors, and that is dealing... Teaching teens to do what is healthy relationships and how to become resilient when relationships don't work out so well. So, these... This recommendation was shared with Winnebago County's Rethink Group, and that is housed at Winnebago County Health Department, and it's a collaboration of community people and agencies and businesses that come together to focus on issues for the county. And our Healthy Lifestyles Group has agreed to take on youth suicide prevention and is strongly encouraging TeenScreen and also is willing to work collaboratively in supporting TeenScreen and anything that needs to be done to get TeenScreen in the schools.
So, that's about it. This is... My name is Sarah Basing-Sutton. Hannah Piscopo is one of our case managers and site coordinators. Chad Lorogi is one of our clinicians. Our particular program is housed at Samaritan Counseling Center in Manassas. And that's kind of the big PowerPoint. I know that you have other information included in your packet, and I will just kind of go through that real briefly. You have that flow chart that kind of walks you right through that process that we talked about as far as how the screening works, the information distribution, when students are screened or not screened, the screening going to a clinical interview or a debriefing, and just a glossary of terms on there, too. So, that's for you to look further into if you so choose. And then, a little bit about how it works, which is also pretty much covered in that PowerPoint. And then, there's also a copy of the 2012-2013 Annual Report for TeenScreen in the Fox Cities. And essentially, it's a summary of how it works, as well as the funders who have supported TeenScreen. And that's the other really neat part about this community schools piece, is that we, these wonderful funders, have given money to support implementation of TeenScreen in 15 different high schools for free. So, essentially, schools have the first year free and pay for the second year, so they get two years of screening for the price of one. And the idea is that we would replicate that model here in the Oshkosh area for Oshkosh, Winnicott, and Amro. And that's kind of goes back to that coalition that Teresa was alluding to, that's willing to help kind of support that fundraising piece of bringing this money to the forefront in the community, to be able to offer it to the high schools for the first year for free. And then, just some statistics of our screening year are at the bottom. So, in the 2012-13 school year, we screened over 200 students at three different high schools and had about 25% of those students indicated a mental health need or suicidality. Typically, we do end up hospitalizing one student per semester, and we do have those collaborations with the hospitals as well so that we can get that student to the hospital that is local. We have a wonderful advisory council of great people, and the idea, too, would be to replicate something similar to that in the Oshkosh area, to have those important players at the table so that we have those important partnerships in place. Nine collaborating mental health providers who expedite TeenScreen appointments and seven to 14 days for students to get that first appointment instead of the four- to eight-week wait. And then, the other form you have there is the fax sheet from Columbia University where the tool originated. So, that's what I've got for you.
Any questions?
I might just note in conclusion here that the QPR is used by the staff in the schools. Many have been trained, and we'll offer more training for the staff. We've not reached out to the parents of the school community at this point. That is something to be done. And the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in total is actually available on the DPI website. So, that's very accessible for anyone who's interested in that.
I just wanted to add, the PTO, when we presented to the PTO, they requested QPR training for their... For the district PTO, and then thought about taking it back to their individual PTOs and then go from there. So, they... I know that Community for Hope was going to be contacting someone from the PTO to provide that training.
Excellent.
Sounds like it's on its way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, educator effectiveness system.
on the different initiatives and major projects that we're working on in the Oshkosh area school district that are mandated by the state. And one of those projects is educator effectiveness. And so, right now, we're going to do an overview, and this overview happens to be very similar to the overview that our whole Oshkosh area school district staff received on August 29. So, if you recall from the workshop session that we had earlier in the spring, we talked about Agenda 2017, which is Tony Evers' plan for public schools in the state of Wisconsin. And the third goal is around school and educator effectiveness and measuring how effective our schools and our educators, because we know that having effective educators in every single classroom is the key to student achievement. So, next week, the release of the school report cards for 2013 will be occurring, and today, we are talking about educator effectiveness, which is the second part of the state, school and educator effectiveness on Agenda 2017. So, the purpose of educator effectiveness system is to provide that fair, valid, and reliable measure of how our teachers are performing within the classroom and statewide, and that we're using a statewide measure. Currently, every school district chooses their own evaluation method and what the research is behind it, the rubrics, et cetera. So, in 2011, Act 166 was legislated that an educator effectiveness system would be put into place. The system is part of the ESEA Flexibility Waiver. It's the waiver that the state applied for to go around No Child Left Behind. And the Measures of Effective Teaching, the MET study, was used when the state of Wisconsin started to look at what educator effectiveness system was going to be put into place. And when we take a deeper look at the DPI model, which is the one that we're going to... That we're piloting this year in the Oshkosh area school district, the MET study was key in providing the foundation, the research foundation behind it. And Sharland Danielson's Framework for Teaching is the framework that is behind the effectiveness, educator effectiveness project. Probably about 10 or 11 years ago, the Oshkosh area school district changed their evaluation system. And at the time, we had been... At that time, we had been going through like a series of checklists and some very vague rubrics when we were giving feedback to teachers. A group of educators got together, along with administrators, and they came up with a model that they called the Veteran Growth Plan. And in the Veteran Growth Plan, a goal was set by the educator, and then action steps were put into place. And whether that educator met the goal and had some growth was part of the whole evaluation process. And that Veteran Growth Plan, when it was put into place, a vision was developed for educator effectiveness or for evaluation in the Oshkosh area school district. So, as we started to embark on looking at implementing Act 166 and putting the educator effectiveness system into place, we went and we looked back at the vision, and lo and behold, 10 to 11 years ago, we did a pretty good job of setting up what evaluation would look like and how it... And right now, the educator effectiveness system and what we have in... What we had in place really parallels. And so, the vision is basically the same that we had 10 or 11 years ago that we have now, with the exception of putting a few words in there that updated things, such as the strategic plan, and also putting in their student growth data rather than student achievement data, because everything that we are talking about around accountability is around student growth and around the growth of the educator. So, we did some pretty good work 10 to 11 years ago. Embedded also in that evaluation system was a belief statement. And once again, the belief statement that we had 10 or 11 years ago really holds true today. So, the Oshkosh area school district believes that the evaluation process for educators should focus on a commitment to growing professional practice for the benefit of student learning and success. So, just like in the vision, that word growth and growing student learning and growing the educator is really a foundation of what we believe when it comes to educator evaluation. And it also is a major foundation in the educator effectiveness system. And Goal 1D of the strategic plan is putting into place the educator effectiveness system. So, everything that we're doing here is all lined up. You've heard me talk about this before, and you've probably seen this slide before, because we are keeping saying over and over again, "I do not want any staff member, principal, administrator, anybody in our school district saying that they're working on 10 different goals. We should be all pulling in one direction." Now, there may be layers to it, but we should be pulling in that one direction, from the classroom to the school to the district. We should all be focused on the growth of the student and pulling in that same direction. So, when we were speaking with staff at the convocation, in the area of teaching and learning, we're going to be really focused on literacy, and our data pans out within our classrooms and our schools and district-wide when we look at school accountability in the next few weeks. It's really reading and literacy that we need to be focused on. Educator Effectiveness, the educator effectiveness system in the state of Wisconsin... Educator Effectiveness, the educator effectiveness system in the state of Wisconsin has two parts to it. It has the educator practice side, and it has the student outcome side. Over on the left, you're going to see in blue the educator practice side. That's where we're looking at, and we're measuring, and we're giving educators feedback on their instruction. What are they doing in the classroom? What are their practices? What are their actions? And how are you measuring? How effective are they, how effective are they? On the right-hand side in green is the student outcome side, and that's where we're really looking at student data. It's data-driven, we're looking at measures. And on each sides of the educator effectiveness system, our educators are going to be setting goals. They're going to be setting professional practice goals, and they're going to be setting student learning outcome goals. And as the educator effectiveness system is fully implemented, eventually, an educator would be getting a rating on their practice side and a rating on their student outcome side. At this time, when we're in the pilot phase, and everybody that's in the pilot phase, we're not giving scores or ratings at this time, okay? But we are practicing and we are piloting both sides of this educator practice side and the student outcome side. Now, you may have heard about two different educator effectiveness systems that are now being piloted in the state of Wisconsin. And at this point in time, districts had choice in piloting either the DPI model, which is based on Charlotte Danielson's work, or piloting the CISA VI Effectiveness Project, which is based on the work of Dr. James Strong. And the CISA VI project is the only, is the only alternate effectiveness system that has been approved at this point in time by the DPI. The right-hand side, the student outcome side, is the same whether it is the CISA VI Effectiveness Project or whether it's the DPI model. The, what's different is the educator practice side. So the educator practice side in the DPI model is based on Charlotte Danielson. In the CISA VI project, it's based on the work of James Strong. Both of the systems, when they go back to standards, are going back to the in-task teaching standards.
Julie?
Yep.
Question. On Charlotte Danielson model, it's the school-wide reading thing, it counts for like 2.5%, I believe. The district choice, I believe, accounts for 2.5% as well. Have we decided what district choice, what we're, what our focus is going to be as a district on that?
Excellent question. The student outcome side, at a, at a presentation earlier in the spring, we had on there pieces of the pie or those percentages that you were referring to, such as 2.5% or 30% would be based on reading, et cetera. At this point in time, the DPI has gone to, SLOs would be the majority of those, and I'm going to talk about what student learning outcome goals are. And then you were correct about the school-wide reading being 2.5% or district choice being 2.5%. We haven't made any decisions on that yet, because we are not doing any ratings this school year. So we haven't chosen a percent. I would, I would say since reading is one of, is one of our major areas that we need to make improvement, that would be probably, I would predict that would be a high probability we would choose reading. But I'm not going to guarantee, you know, we, data may pan out to be something else, but I would say that would be a high probability. So, going back to the student outcome side, you saw on there an acronym, an SLO. And the educator effectiveness system in this particular initiative is just full of acronyms. We've been having fun with acronyms, and we've been doing some acronym bingo and some other things to have some fun with those acronyms and getting used to all of those. But SLO is one that you're going to hear throughout the state. In fact, at a meeting I was at today with other district and, other sister district administrators, we were talking about SLOs, and lo and behold, we all know what we're talking about. But, what is an SLO? It's a student learning objective. It's a, it's a goal, a SMART goal, and remember, SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, and now I'm not going to, but, realistic, reliable, realistic, and timely. So, a SMART goal. All of the SLOs are an academic growth goal or an attainment goal, but all of them have to be academic-based, and they're for an entire classroom or a targeted population with a classroom or a grade level. And SLOs can be written as individuals or teams. We are really encouraging our educators to write teen SLOs, because once again, it goes back to that graphic with all the arrows pulling in the same direction, that if we're working collaboratively, we're working as a team, we're more than likely going to see a bigger push in student growth. And, and personally, if I'm going to be working on a goal, I would rather be working with fellow educators and working as a team than working by myself. The SLO also means school-wide learning objective. And so instead of writing school improvement goals, we're, we're still writing school improvement goals, we're just going to be calling them school-wide learning objectives or SLOs. And those SLOs are really going to be the building principals' SLOs, and their evaluation's going to be based off of whether their building has met those school-wide learning objectives. So, Steve asked a question about Danielson's Framework for Teaching. When we measure the educator practice side, it's going to be based off of the Danielson's Framework for Teaching. And the, the research that's behind Danielson's Framework for Teaching is extensive. It was first introduced in 1996 and has been revised several times, and the latest version, which is the 2013 version, is the version that's used in the educator effectiveness system here in Oshkosh and statewide. But, teaching is a complex, is a complex activity, and Charlotte Danielson has used a quote from Shuliman Lee about that teaching is, there is no other activity that's as complex as teaching other than an emergency room physician acting right after a natural disaster or a major accident and operating triage. So, teaching's really complex. So the Framework for Teaching tries to take it and pull it in part and make it as observable and as simplistic as it can. And so there's four domains that we're working with our educators on. Our domain one is planning and preparation. Domain two is classroom environment. Domain three is instruction, and domain four is professional responsibilities. And so taking those four domains and those 22 components underneath it, we should be able to go into a classroom, because a lot of times we go into a classroom, we say, "You know what? This is really good teaching that's going on in there." But how do you quantify it? What does it look like? And the Framework for Teaching helps us describe it and also give feedback to teachers to make them better. This summer, our principals went through 40-plus hours of professional development around the Framework for Teaching, and all of them are certified Danielson observers within this framework. And so there is, there's credibility and certification behind this, because we really feel this activity is important and that we're giving very reliable and valid feedback to our teachers. And so a lot of professional development has gone behind this, and so we're really proud of our principals and our administrators that 40 hours, that's a, that's a lot of work to go through there, and we're really proud of them. So, within the Framework of Teaching guides the educator practice side, and on the educator practice side, our educators are going to be writing professional practice goals in order to push their professional practice, because if we enhance or push professional practice, we know that's going to enhance or push student learning. So, a professional practice goal for the teacher is a professional growth goal that enhances their practice, and it's aligned to that Framework for Teaching. So they're going in and they're diving deep into those components and say, "Where, you know, where are areas that I can, that I can grow? Where are areas that I can improve?" It's established by an individual or a team of teachers, because perhaps when they looked at the student data, and then you look at the Framework for Teaching, and they look at their professional practice, there's areas that they're going to need to grow or learn in. And so you may be doing that as a, as a teacher team. And PPGs, the professional practice goals, support the educator in once again meeting those SLOs, because if we're going to push student learning, there's probably going to be things that the educator's going to have to do in order to get that to happen. The principals are also writing professional practice goals, because in order to support their teachers and learning in their schools, they're going to need to be enhancing their professional practice. So, what's the plan? The implementation plan is who will be evaluated. At first, right now, we're ready to roll out, we're doing principals and teachers. And in 2014, we are going to be mandated that we have to be ready for principals and teachers, and that's what we're piloting and working on this year. Teacher specialist positions in our people services are going to be added to the system later, and when we talk about specialists, we're talking about school psychologists, school nurses, school counselors, those, those educators that are in our schools that aren't necessarily in front of children or are teaching in a classroom. And those will be added later. And the evaluation model for district administrators and office staff superintendents will be coming at a later time, but will also be part of the full plan under the ESEA waiver. So, when is this all going to happen? There were pilots of the DPI model and the CISA VI model last year, and actually, we participated in a small pilot of the CISA VI model with North High School last year. This year, the pilots have been expanded, and we are a district pilot for the DPI model. And the system will be fully implemented for teachers and principals in the 1415 school year. So, we're, we're a little bit ahead of the curve, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve and be prepared for that full implementation in the fall of 2014.
Excuse me, did you say that the North High pilot included or involved the CISA VI model?
Yep. Last year, the North High did a small pilot of the CISA VI model.
And what did the data show?
At, at that time, we had, we had mixed reviews on, on that system, and I had actually been part of one of the work committees that helped work on the CISA VI Effectiveness Project. And as we were looking at, at the tools, the support, and the different pieces that went into the CISA VI model, we felt, we really felt like that the research behind Charlotte Danielson and the Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching provided a foundation that lined it better to our teaching and learning philosophy in the Oshkosh area school district. And we also felt that the TeachScape tool that complements, and I'll talk about that, the DPI model, was a lot more developed and user-friendly than the model that was being used with CISA VI.
Thank you.
So, the Oshkosh area school district educator effectiveness system, and, and basically the Wisconsin State system, is cyclical, if you look at this, and it's basically the system, like I said, the Veteran Growth Plan that was put into place 10 to 11 years ago. The system and the, and the basic steps and the evaluation process are the same, starting with an orientation. You review your data, you set a goal, you conference, and you finalize that with your, with your principal or your supervisor, observations, evidence, collect data, you do a mid-year review, observations, evidence, collect data, you do your end-of-the-year review, and then you have your final evaluation conference. So, so the overall steps in the evaluation process are the same, and it seems really simplistic. So, the steps are the same, but it's really about what are you doing with the steps and what are you doing to dig deeper into those pieces to push growth. On August 20, on August 29, we did this overview, but in addition to that, made available to our staff was a 10-page, basically, everything you want to know about the educator effectiveness system in Oshkosh in a small 10-page packet was made available to them. And in there is, is a chart or an outline of how the different groups or categories of educators are going to be evaluated this year under the educator effectiveness system. And there's basically three categories. We have our initial educators, which are in years one, two, and three within the Oshkosh area school district. We have our veteran educators, which are evaluated every three years. So this year, an educator that is up on that evaluation cycle would be that veteran educator. And then we have veteran educators that are on a non-evaluation year. Our initial educators, which in the past, we'd done portfolios and were required by state law to do three observations and, and evaluate them every year for the first three years, are going to be under the full Oshkosh area school district educator effectiveness system. And they're going to be using TeachScape platform for all their forms, their data, et cetera, and everything is going to be paperless within that. Our veteran educators that are on evaluation are going to be using the Veteran Growth Plan that we had used before, but it's been modified to start to move our veteran educators into the educator effectiveness system. So, instead of writing just one SMART goal and doing their action plan, they are going to be writing two professional practice goals and two student learning outcome goals, just like the educator effectiveness. So in other words, they're going to be doing it paperless, we're going to be doing it via Google Docs, but we're not going to be using the full-blown TeachScape system platform or system with them. So it's, it's a hybrid. It's moving them into the, into the new educator effectiveness system. And then for all of our teachers that are not on evaluation this year, everybody's going to practice writing a SMART, an SLO, a student learning outcome goal, because if we're focused on data and we're trying to push student learning, we're all going to be writing those goals. And if you're not on evaluation this year, we want you to have the practice, and we want you to get the professional development, so that you're ready to go into the full educator effectiveness system next school year.
Yeah. How does this mesh with, you know, license renewal for initial? Is this going to be the professional development plan that they put together? Is this supplemented, or how's that fit together?
Actually, it's, okay, it's not in this PowerPoint. The, the professional development plan for PI 34 in order to renew your license, your professional development plan, and the educator effectiveness system, they are totally separate, okay? And they need to be, because one is for licensure and the other one is for evaluation. However, though, going back to my graphic with the orange arrows pulling in all one direction, one can inform the other. You have to remember that your professional development plan, your PDP for licensure, goes over five years. And so when you're setting goals within that, they're very, they're very broad and are going to take you over five years. When you're doing, when you're setting goals in the educator effectiveness system, it's only for one year, and it's for those students at that time in your classroom, so it's very focused on one year. Now, one can reflect the other. So if your PDP is around, is around literacy or literacy strategies, and that can match up to your student learning outcome goals and your professional practice goals for that year that you're under evaluation. So one can inform the other, and we are absolutely encouraging all of our educators that are writing PDPs and are under evaluation, line the two up. Make sure one informs the other.
Thank you.
Just a general question. Why would we evaluate every three years?
That it's, it's state law, that that's the cycle, that's every three years. The other thing is going to everybody under evaluation in the first, like, let's say next year, we said, "You know what? Everybody's under evaluation." That's going to be, that's 800 educators, and that's going to be a really tall order to, to get that done and get it done within the way that it's meant to be, to really push and grow the educator practice and give them the feedback that they need. I mean, there's a lot of details, and this is complex. I mean, you're getting the really simplistic version, but to do all 800 at once, it would take a lot of people power to do that.
Okay.
So, going back to people power, training and professional development, this doesn't happen without really supporting our educators, supporting our principals, and supporting our educators that are under evaluation and going into the system. So principals and peer coaches were trained in the model, including the Danielson Framework and TeachScape, this past summer. All principals, we have the goal of being certified observers. We have a couple new principals that will be soon coming onboard, so of course, they're not certified yet, but 40-plus hours to get them to that certified level.
And it was not just seat time, they additionally need to do online testing to validate that.
Correct. Yeah. The two-part assessment to be a certified observer takes approximately six hours.
Are we able to apply to grants for DPI to help offset the cost of that professional development?
Actually, we did all of our professional development in-house. And so, we did not, we did not incur costs, and then actually, we partnered with UW-Oshkosh for those, for those principals that were interested. We were able to get them graduate credits for doing that professional development.
Excellent.
Yep. So, for the rest of our staff, we have done flipped training modules. So, we have put on YouTube, we actually have an Oshkosh area school district educator effectiveness YouTube channel, if you would like to check it out, but we have flipped training models. The overview that you're, that you're viewing right now is, is one of them. We have the Danielson's Framework for Teaching, writing SLOs and writing PPGs. There's actually three modules in that were just added. And putting the plan together and TeachScape and Observation for Initial Educators will be coming. So we've been trying to do a flipped model with, with documentation and support, so that educators can go back and they can look at those modules at any time. They can be used by principals in small groups or in staff meetings to get that. And then also by having those modules via YouTube or flipped, everybody's getting the same message. So, questions?
You weren't kidding about the acronyms, were you?
It's like the military. It is.
I would just like to add, taking this on, and Julie and Kim leading the way, and with the support of the instructional leadership team, you have thousands of dollars that districts have spent in formal training by bringing in outside, being done in-house, at tremendous effort on the part of our leadership, Kim and Julie, and providing the package and working directly with, I think, the effectiveness of being ongoing, having an ongoing relationship and being available to our principals, and also as well to our educators across the district, is so much different than a person who just comes in and then is gone. And that ongoing connection is there, and as I have observed, as the process, the engagement of our principals in taking this And as I have observed, as the process, the engagement of our principals in taking this on very seriously with knowing full well the essential need to accomplish and be successful at that, but it's also done with, it's a class act, what Julie and Kim have done in leading this process. It is a classic model of taking the resources that we didn't have, converting those into in-house resources and doing so in just a fantastic manner. And I've had a chance to observe quite a bit of the training and see the engagement and it's just absolutely top-notch. Thank you to Julie and Kim.
It was very interesting. And as a matter of fact, could you please send me a copy of that PowerPoint? I'd like to.
It's on YouTube, man.
Actually, all you have to do is go on YouTube and type in, search OASD educator effectiveness and they're all there. But I can get you, I can send you links to the manual and all those things so that you can take a look at it. No problem. If you have access, it's right on the portal page. I can send you to the portal page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the concept of accountability. We know our students have been accountable for many years through the various state testing programs and before that, district programs. But I like this effort, not only on behalf of the district, but also the state in terms of making sure that our teachers are accountable and our administrators are accountable and that there should be more consistency, reliability in the evaluation process of our educators. So, I salute what you and Kim have done here.
Thank you.
I can tell you from comparing notes with many sister districts, we're out ahead of the pack significantly with the training and the investment and taking this so seriously that at this stage in this year, you're ahead of the mandate, but by having the pilots run this far ahead, we are in a far better position to be really compliant next year when it becomes a requirement of law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move to individually considered resolutions. Number one is the approval of appointments and temporary appointments, resignations, and salary scheduling. Be resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion of any guidance? No? Please call the roll.
Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number two, be resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the selection of Miller and Associates as the vendor for purchasing outdoor bleachers, including installation and state approval and engineer inspection fees at Ashkosh West High School in the amount of $23,490.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number three, be resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the selection of Miller and Associates as the vendor for purchasing outdoor bleachers, including installation and state approval and engineer inspection fees at Ashkosh West High School in the amount of $23,490.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginac?
Aye.
Saginac, aye. Wiedenhaupt?
Aye.
Wiedenhaupt, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? We did actually put one item back on our list which had fallen off by mistake. I don't have it in front of me, but it was with regard to the, I think it was either your request or Kelly's concerning data for people who were exited.
Yep.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
So, it is still on the list.
Thank you.
And will be forthcoming.
Okay.
I believe in the workshop session in October, I believe, Mike, you'll be prepared to provide that information.
Great.
Hopefully so. Yeah. We've got to stop the replacement process before we get to that, but we're targeting the first meeting of October.
Okay.
Next, does anyone have any announcements? Seeing none, I will request a motion.
I would just like to thank the central office administrative team for taking time from their busy schedules to help orient me to the board. And that includes Stan and board members who have been helpful in orienting me. I feel like the new kid on the block who's trying to catch up after missing a few days of class. So, I thank all of you for helping me in my journey to be a good and effective board member. So, thank you all.
And if I have the calendar right, I believe we have another final session tomorrow.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specific public business wherever competitive or bargaining